All right, let's call the board please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval minutes.
Who would approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign.
Motion carries.
Bills. There's additional bills on our desks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or discussion on the bills asked for?
Come on, I'm the listener.
No additional discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Rith.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Financials. What we got?
Um, everything looks good. We just have to do, um, for next meeting, do a chance for LVC.
Any questions, discussion?
Who would approve the financials as submitted?
Second. We have motion is second to approve financials as submitted. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Agenda. Anything to add?
Who would approve?
Aye. Motion is second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries, the agenda is adopted. Good run. There she is.
Hi.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Thanks for having me.
Um, can I ask real quick, just for reminder's sake, if they're gonna speak from the back end, speak up real loud because the speaker up here is what's picking it up and it gets muffled, so just like scream at it or something.
Yeah, I don't have any trouble with that.
Okay, just trying to remind everybody as we speak today during the meeting, so.
Thank you. Um, I think Candy sent out the, uh, my budget request, or my budget for, um, 2021. I threw a lot of information at you a couple weeks ago regarding indirect costs. You can see there's an indirect budget for each county. And there's also a, uh, direct budget. The total operating budget for, you can see, is five million, four hundred, um, seven dollars, five million, four hundred and seven, eight hundred and two dollars and four cents. So, um, going forward, the indirect, of course, comes out of, um, costs that are reimbursed also by the state of North Dakota. That's been a huge heartburn with, um, a lot of commissions. I think sometimes not totally understanding that process. Um, I talked to you and I gave you information. I sent out to some of you, uh, an audio explaining the countywide cost allocation. And that is a mechanism, a cost, um, cost allocation is a mechanism where the state of North Dakota draws down federal dollars related to social services. So, uh, you know, the state's attorney, the state's attorney reports each year how many hours she spends, um, doing, uh, social service work, um, denervation, petitions, that type of thing. And then the state reports that and draws down the dollars. You get a report that's two years late. So when you hear me talk about indirect costs being two years behind, that's where it comes from. So we're actually operating on 2016 numbers reported to the countywide cost allocation. It takes about two years to get the report. The legislators saw that report in 2018 and based our, um, reimbursement for indirect costs based on that 2018, which is 2016 numbers, countywide cost allocation. So it's very confusing for folks. So there's been a huge rub with some counties. And, um, I'm looking at it because we experienced that in our last board meeting, uh, the Mount Lake Human Services Board meeting. So some of the counties budgeted some of that countywide cost allocation like the reimbursement for the, the state's attorney. They budgeted that as revenue for their general county, um, budget, which caused some heartburn because we, as Mount Lake Human Services Zone voted early in January to keep all the indirect money and then reimburse back. So those, that indirect, that indirect cost line for each county, you can see, I think I broke it out, each county. So you can see that, that is rent, um, cars, maintenance of cars, any indirect cost. So getting back to the countywide cost allocation, it's not dollar for dollar. So say Carrie reports she spent $10 for the year in 2016 doing social services. She, we did get 8% of that back. Don't recall, I, I can't remember, 2018, early on, changed the countywide cost allocation again in an attempt to, um, in an attempt to save property tax dollars for the citizens of the counties because social services was a heavy burden. So getting back to, she reports $10, we got 25% of that back. So, you know, if you look on there, some of the state's attorney reimbursed this four grand, six grand. It's not a lot of money. So that's kind of the long and short of it. So what I need from you today, based on coming up 20 more, which, you know, we have a legislative year coming up now in January, I think that the big questions are gonna be about the indirect costs and why, 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 why? Because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding I have about that already coming back to you. And it is state dollars. There, there aren't county dollars in there, but the rub is we should get to take the state's attorney because we are, out of our county budget, paying the state's attorney. Now, our county, Towner County and Benson County has always put that back into the, the, the social service budget. So it's not been such a rub for us. However, Rolet County, huge issue for them. Um, so I think I hit all the high points I wanted to. Um, it's, it's a, it's somewhat complicated, but not. So the direct, the, the budget all in total is the $5 million figure I gave you. So what I'm asking today is a motion to accept that budget. Um, I'm going to be in the circuit. Towner County's commission meeting was canceled today, so I'm not going to Towner County, but, um, yeah, so you're the first ones to get a look at it, um, the first commission to get a look at it. So I'll just stand for any questions.
Rhonda, is she Towner County like $4,903? Probably had costs in on Ramsey money then? Is that correct?
Um, well, uh, we, we formed a district like 12 or 14 years ago. I'm not sure the timeline, it was before.
So we're still running after there?
Right. So they, they had very low. We had this date for her to get that. So, um, again, if you look at the costs, you can see some of the counties are quite high.
Right.
And they had, they were at buildings. Um, Rolet County has a building and the sheriff's old, it's a little house that the child will, where folks are in. And they charge off rent to the countywide cost allocation for that. We have space in the buildings. We have space in the one ramp, which is pretty low. Um, so the, the costs are lower. Um, cars, I, we did not budget for any cars this year, which I'm hoping is not a mistake. Um, we have a couple cars of pretty high mileage. We do a lot of placements, um, Raleigh, North Dakota. We drive, uh, Northern Minnesota. We drive, we, we have to drive a lot of places to visit children that we have placed around the tri-state area, probably Colorado. We don't drive there, we fly there, but that's an indirect cost.
Did we put some cars into the 21 budget?
No, we did not.
What does the state direct us to do on that?
Um, to follow the, uh, procurement, uh, guidelines for new cars and, um, just did not have any need to, um, go, Rolet County has three cars that one of them could probably be replaced. We're running on one of them that, with the procurement, um, regulations, a couple years of mileage. I'm not sure what they are right now. But we skimmed under that. So we did not ask for any cars. If it would have been just our county and, and Towner County, um, based on our history of fixing cars, fixing cars, fixing cars, and it doesn't come out in the end, I probably would have requested a car. But, um, with everything else that was going on, it just didn't seem that it was, to be really honest, worth the fight.
In your opinion, you think Rolet County's concerns got answered the other day at our regular meeting?
No.
You don't think so?
Well, I think that they understand how indirect dollars are allocated back. Um, they believe that they spent in 2016, uh, that $35,800 to employ the state's attorney for social service costs. They want that 25% of that $3,800 they reported, or $3800 they, $30,000 they reported back. And that is not the way we decided to do our zone. Each zone had the option to do our finances the way we did. Um, and, um, I think it's very difficult. The way the bill is written, it's a kind of an and/or or maybe. Other zones have done this. We chose to keep all the money in Ramsey County and pay the bills. Give us your bills. Because we wanted control of our budget.
Right.
Um, and that's, and they also, um, employed our contract with the, uh, custodial service to clean the two buildings that we rent in Rolet County. So their costs are higher.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm guessing that we're talking to legislators and they want this portion changed. Um, I think what, what everyone forgets at the end of the day is we were, we were, um, uh, levying 30, 37 mils for social services, now levying nothing. And they were levying, they're maxed out at 60, their whole county. So they're really looking for any place for cash. And this has been kind of what made zero gain on. So that's, not to get off on Rolet County, but that's been pretty much our conversations at some board meetings for, you know, most of the last three, four, five months.
It's good for the other commissioners to hear this because none of the other counties have any problem with how their indirect costs are going. And when the board voted in January, put it, put the financial burden on Ramsey, which was fine, Ramsey County, it can be. It was only one way to do it. And I, we all agree to that. You can't have four checkbooks to one account. That's not.
Yeah, I think, you know, in a household budget, when you look at how that works, sometimes with two people, it, it just is very difficult from my own experience. But, um, I think that, um, when you look at indirect costs, when we're looking at reported paper costs, copy machine costs, I mean, pens and paper, um, day to day at 2016 levels, and it's gonna be 2021, we're gonna dip into some of that state's attorney money. And I think that's what is really difficult for the Rolet County folks to, on the board anyway, to understand that this is not gonna be 2021 and we're operating on 2016 reported costs. So, um, the other thing that I think is hard to hear, and it was very loud and clear at the legislative session, in the last days when this was passed and, um, they took out the one-time cost, Adam, you remember this, they took out the one-time cost. They took out an inflator for indirect costs, which is very, very concerning to everyone at the time. They wanted county commissions to have some. It was that, the word was back and forth, the words, skim it again. You have to pay something, you know? And I think that social services has always been kind of like, well, yeah, yeah. And so, um, it's a very necessary, um, part of our community and it, it helps, uh, you know, we do child welfare. We do elderly and disabled. I mean, we, we serve a lot of citizens in great need. And so I think that there's, uh, part of what the 2124, Senate Bill 2164 was designed to do was philosophical, to help communities be more aware of what's going on. Because I think it was really easy for commissioners to just focus on the money. Unfortunately, I feel like our zone has not focused on services and focused on money just because money's tight. And I get it. I mean, but we haven't spent a lot of time on services. And so, you know, it, it, um, hopefully as we go forward, we try to do some more, um, education about services in the community. When you don't have services for citizens, social service costs go up. When you don't have counseling, you don't have, uh, services for, um, abused families, that type of thing, county social service costs go up. We're seeing, we had 30 applications. Um, well, actually, if you count across the zone, we had 38 applications for services yesterday. Folks are hurting. Um, furlough, businesses haven't opened in some of the counties. Uh, I believe casino in, um, turmoil is still closed. So those folks are really looking at where food for, for September. So we're busy, very busy. So, so those are some of the things that we'll have to figure out. We operate, and I also want to brag a little bit, our four counties operate very, very lean. Our ratio of SNAP households is 50, or excuse me, 91.5 families per worker. And our neighbors are going about 50 families per worker. So it's pretty frustrating to sit and know that we do twice the work as far as serving folks, because we've always operated lean. So those are some of the things that I've been not very popular with my peer group. Say, hey, come on, we need to take a look at a caseload here that's equitable for all workers. So those are some of the things. And I, I kind of got off on a tangent, I apologize. But really what I want to do is to take a look at the budget. If you have questions, I can answer them. I'm pretty passionate about the services part of it, while folks want the money today.
Rhonda, I have, I have two questions, uh, just to make sure that I, I understand. Uh, so you said that you took a vote in January that all of the reimbursement coming ends up in the district itself, right?
In the zone. We, we put it to our financial, our, our host county is Ramsey County, and I'm pointing at Candy because her office then took on payroll and paying on those. Yes.
Sure. Uh, and is that binding towards the counties that are part of the district? So what I'm really asking is, is as it stands right now, there's no way that, that say Rolet can treat that as general revenue for their county because of the fact that that vote was taken. Is that correct?
Uh, yes and no. They did, and they are looking for it. They want it back. So, um, I think that, um, they're short. They're, they're looking at, and I guess I, you could ask them, but I think they told us they're looking at a huge shortfall in 2020 and projected into a large shortfall in 2021. So yes, they are looking to get at least the state's attorney. There's, uh, we're down to the postage machine. It's, it's a couple hundred dollars.
Sure. But, but so the, the question is, is, is that sort of a memorandum of understanding between the counties that we're all agreeing that in general we're gonna return it? Or is it binding? So if, if Rolet decided, hey, we're treating this as revenues to our county, specifically, could they do that under the law?
No, it's, it's, it's in our bank account, so to speak.
Okay.
And at the end of the year, I know Adam has, and Adam have helped to explain that he will take a look at if they're in the indirect costs. It's separate out because here our financial person has Benson, Ramsey, and you can see that in the packet. If there is money at the end of the year that will go back to Rolet County, will it be the same amount that they got, that they reported in the 2016 countywide cost allocation for their state's attorney? Probably not, because papers go out. Other costs have gone out. Um, so that, is that, I'm sorry.
I think, I think to be honest with my question, I have one.
It's pretty confusing for folks.
One more question, which is, so you said that the state's reimbursement rate is 25%? Is that?
Just on that countywide cost allocation portion is, the, the countywide cost allocation, it's a company that does advocates. Just in those things that are claimed on there, 25% of what you claim is your reimbursement, state dollar reimbursement, which is included in the indirect pool of money along with other costs, of indirect costs.
Okay. But, but, okay, yep, no, I understand. Sure.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry. It's pretty confusing, but, um.
Can I explain it? Oh, I understand it.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe my language is correct. Um, so if you look at the, at the indirect expense sheets, at the bottom you'll have the, the, uh, monthly, or the, the total, basically. And then you'll have the 25% cost, countywide cost allocation on top. So essentially, essentially that 25% countywide cost allocation is what supposedly will come back to us at the end of the year for our expenses that are coming from the county. Well, you subtract that from the bottom number, that, the rest of that is the indirect cost expense that's supposed to be sitting in the zone. We decided to throw all that money into the zone because we didn't know where we were gonna come out at the end of the year. Well, what's happening is, is the indirect costs are tracking higher than the costs that are the difference. So we're gonna eat, we're gonna eat into that countywide cost allocation. I think Ramsey County right now, we're looking probably $7,000, $8,000. So for us, I mean, not a huge deal. We'll just take less money in on the countywide cost allocation. But we always treat that as money that's just, you know, money that's coming back. We don't budget it. It just happens to come back. Whereas Rolet, for instance, I think theirs is $57,000. They're expecting every penny of that to get back now. And they're tracking high as well. So they're gonna come up short, where the rest of us are like, well, if we come up short, okay, well, we'll just have $7,000 less dollars come back to us. Where they're saying, where are we gonna come up with $7,000 bucks? And that's where their concern is because their general fund is capped out. They don't have the ability to apply more money. If we have to, we just take over from our general fund.
They're already at 60 mil.
Yeah, they're at, they're at the tipping point. We're not. That's where the problem, that's where the concern comes.
So then, and that, that does sort of give rise again to the question that I was originally gonna ask, which is, is it possible or likely that the state will change or could change the reimbursement percentage in the next session?
I think that it's very possible in the next legislative session because this has been a concern of other counties, I understand. It's going to be a topic at the, um, the NACCO, you know, Pro Association of County users, there's gonna be a session. I encourage you all to probably sign up for that, to listen to that. However, I would tell you that, yes, um, we use the, if you look, we'll just look at the postage machine, or we'll stick with the state's parents. We use the state's attorney. In the past, Ramsey, Benson, Towner County have said, yep, we employ state's attorney. They've put all that in the general fund. They have not budgeted the rent revenue coming back on the countywide cost allocation to offset their state's attorney's budget. They have not done that. They've just kept it in the social service pot. And I think Candy just, you know, followed along with how, I think almost every other county was doing. There are a few, I understand, that budgeted back, like, social services used four grand of the state's attorney. You know, you have to understand in some counties with the population, like Adams, I always pick on Adams County. It was probably $2,000. They probably had a case, maybe, because they don't have much child welfare. So there, it probably ended up to be, you know, a couple hundred dollars. And, and so they just, it was a wash. But when you look at bigger counties with this higher child welfare caseload, if we're just looking at the state's attorney, they want that money. They're like, yeah, we, we paid, in 2016, Alec Albert is telling, uh, we paid the state's attorney to do child welfare work for, for Benson County or for Rolet County. We want that back. And we voted, like I said in January, to hold it because we're certain, like, copy paper, all those other indirect costs have gone out. So thanks, Adam. I appreciate that.
Well, and, and the discussion at the, at the zone board level has been, obviously changes are gonna have to happen in the 2021 session. We know that Representative Westland sits on our board from, from our district here. He's very aware of it. He knows. He sits on the Human Services Committee, not on the Approves Committee, but where the, where the bill draft is gonna get run through. So he's very aware of the situation. Uh, it's gonna be addressed. It's just a matter of how is it, how is it gonna be addressed? The other concern is that there are costs right now that are technically direct costs that are transitioning to indirect costs. So if we're running at a shortfall this year, we're gonna run a more of a shortfall when those direct costs transition indirect costs. So that's something that's gonna have to be addressed as well. Now, again, we've talked about from our perspective, we're gonna run at a shortfall and we'll have to dip into the general. I'm still willing to trade off if we have to spend $20,000 or $30,000 of Ramsey County's money to get 37 mils off of us. But we've got the luxury of having money in the general and the ability to work with it. Whereas some counties don't. Now, the question that comes in that might come up in the 21 session too is there are provisions within the bill that are kind of, I don't know if I'd say sketchy, but we're not really sure what they mean. Let's put it that way. Where it states that if you run out of, uh, indirect cost money and you don't have the ability to find more money, they, they basically say that county should pay for any indirect cost overruns. But if you can't find more money, then the director can give you a waiver. So the question is then, if Rolet County, if they're out of money, would, would Chris Jones be able to give them a waiver? And then they would give them ca, I mean, so that's, there's stuff that has to be cleared up. A lot of discussions gonna have to happen about how to get it straight and balanced.
Right. If there are no changes in the bill for 2022, who will be looking at, I'm guessing, I mean, I, it's, well, I guess it's more than a guess. I'm pretty certain we'll be asking, um, the director of the Human Services, which is Chris Jones, to, to waive their indirect costs and pay it. They just have enough of taxpayers to support the social service need. And we, we ran into that too. We, you know, we were 10 mils over the statewide average for supporting, I gave you the one graphic, um, a couple weeks ago. I mean, like, no, I threw a lot of information at you, but NACCO took three houses in three different counties. And what that taxpayer pays, percentage of their taxes paid for social services, we were the highest. You know, we were higher percentage than past counties, which I don't want you to say that information, but you should see the pictures of the houses there. And so, um, this is a first step, or a second step, or a third step, depending, anybody look at, at, at trying to, um, equalize the taxpayers' burden for social services across the state instead of focusing on if you have no tax, taxable land to, to, to pay to bill, so to speak, for social services. So I mean, it's a work in progress. I think there's been a lot of good work done. I think 2124 essentially was good. Um, like, like Adam said, you know, it was 37 mils to nothing. So it, it has to be good. It was a tax saving for the counties, but there are some rubs, lots of rubs with indirect costs. So.
In the conversation we had at the other meeting last week, I thought Albert's was, we kind of put him at ease. I thought, when we said, well, we're gonna have to look at this at the end of the year, and we really can't look at it till then and see where it ends up. You know, and we visited and we said that, you know, there is, we might have to step in and talk to the director and see where that goes.
I, I think that was helpful. Yes.
And we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at our options when we figure out exactly where we're gonna be at essentially. I mean, we have an idea, but we don't know how the costs are gonna track at the end of the year. We'll be able to build something against that. It's, it's, it's gonna be, at the end of the day, the zone has to function. So we're gonna have to figure out how we can, how we can work together to make it work.
You know, I, I sent a letter earlier to the, to the auditor's email stating, and I, I don't know if I included any commissioners or not, but my goal is not to levy from the general fund. I mean, we'll try our best. We've been, we operate very, very lean. We looked at cost savings. If you look at our total budget, we did save about $33,000, which is not accurate because the numbers for our, for our, um, the numbers for our, our health insurance came in later. We budgeted a 10% increase for health insurance on that $5 million direct fund. Uh, or excuse me, I, I don't know what the exact figure is for direct funds, but it actually came in at six. So there are gonna be more savings from last, from, um, 2020 for 2021. Like I said, I, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we run really lean and we give, we do provide very excellent services across our zone. There, but there are some rubs with indirect costs going up.
And we're running under budget on direct costs. We're actually doing pretty well there overall, but it's just that indirect cost under overran.
Yeah, I, you know, we can get right down to, already the paper is, I think, four to five dollars more than it was in 2016. I mean, it's just they, those things just add up.
Okay, additional questions, comments? This guy.
Who would approve?
Sergeant.
Yeah, we have a motion is second to approve the 2021, uh, Mountain Lakes District, uh, Human Service Zone, but further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Rhonda. Carrie, what time do you have, you have port to go to, correct?
9:00.
9:00. What time will you be back? Good answer. There it is. Sarah, how long are you going to be there?
Like, pretty good.
Okay, we'll get you done and then we're gonna skip down to Carrie because we need Carrie here for the discussion. So Sarah, go ahead.
Okay, so just a, a little update for Ramsey County Extension. Uh, our marathon of achievement day is finally wrapped up on August 13th with our horse show. We have a total of six participants at the horse show and it went very well, uh, with all the changes that we had made. We, uh, are still have our three gardens going and our last, we have our garden class also ended on August 13th. We had a total of 12 participants with that. Um, every, I don't get to harvest a pumpkin and some other produce from the gardens. And now with the, the last bit of, uh, garden homes, we're giving it to the high school, which is one of the, uh, one of the schools that is still having a salad bar this school year. Uh, we recently had our 4-H family fun night, uh, which is kind of the end of the year, start of the year, um, award night for all of our 4-Hers. We had that on August 26th outdoors. Um, now, um, we did have a, attendance and anytime we have any, um, uh, people, uh, attendance over 25, you do have, have to have a plan approved by, uh, District Health and our District Director. So, um, going forward with our 4-H clubs and things like that, so anytime our 4-H clubs will, will need to have more than 25 in attendance, they will have to have a plan approved. Uh, we're continuing our, uh, my diabetes prevention program. Continuing our, my diabetes prevention program, we've been doing that outdoors and having pretty good attendance with that. Our state shotgun shoot ended up getting postponed last month, but it is rescheduled for September twelfth of this month. And we'll have about nine participants from Ramsey County. We are hosting a state air rifle competition on September twenty-sixth. Now with that, we are just hosting our Ramsey County. Every county is holding their own competition within their county's community numbers lower. And just to let you know that NDSU always errs on the side of caution. So anytime North Dakota has guidelines set for, I mean, COVID type situations, you're always more cautious. So that is why we might have a few more guidelines of what the state would have, such as the approval that we need for twenty-five or over attendance. Next, for the next meeting, our district director, we have a new district director named Deanna Kement, and she would like to come to the commission meeting next month and just meet you guys and tell her, tell a little bit about herself and just know you guys a little bit better. So she'll be with Bill and I next month. And then Bill also wants to just make sure everybody is just aware of the advisory for the blueberry algae on, for Bell's Lake and then the warning for Stump Lake, just to kind of be aware and be very cautious with that. So that, that challenge that is going on with extension.
That was great.
Any questions?
Any questions? Questions? No questions?
Thank you, Sarah.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Okay. No one has any concerns? Since Carrie asked for court at nine, I'd like to jump down to the new bit, under the business nuisance property policy discussion just because I like to have Carrie here for that because I'm not a lawyer, so. I haven't been for ever, so. We put this on the agenda. Commissioner Olson asked to have it put on. So would you like to, I guess, bring up what you'd like to discuss, I guess?
I've gotten complaints, several complaints on a piece of property, and we've had this issue for years and years and years and years. And I'm just kind of wondering what we can do to get this taken care of. I don't know. Bob wants to make an opinion. He's one of the people who have discussed it with me. He's one of several.
The only thing I would have to say is, is a blood eyesore, it's a shame to see a bunch of junk laying right off of Highway nineteen. It doesn't speak good of our community. And I know years ago when Youngs was in business, they had to put up a fence around their stuff. So I think it's something that should be addressed in one form or another. And it's not just that one place. There are other places around the community in the two-mile territorial zone that should be addressed also. If it was in your backyard, you would not be happy.
And I wonder if there's some health issues. I mean, I went and looked at a couple of different places. And, you know, we got cars, you know, the one has a dozen cars on that aren't being used. Or you got to know their scum, you got to know their mice. We just got to clean this up a little bit. Like Bob said, it's an eyesore for our community. The one you get off the airplane, that's what you see. And it's, the territorial thing, you know, you bring it up and you say, well, this is the city and the city says it's the county and the county says it's the city. I just like, she's back there laughing.
So, there's one thing that we looked at. One of it falls under the nuisance statutes in the state. So there's two different types of nuisance, strategy, one is public nuisance, which comes with the most available options to pursue, and then one is private nuisance. Public nuisance is one that affects the entire community, the neighborhood, or a considerable amount of people. Private nuisance is one that affects a single person or a determinate number of people. Public nuisance is can be charged though criminally, they can exclude that. Certainly, private nuisance is taking private action of that nature. That's one rub. Another rub that those, we looked at is public health. The public health, that's an abatement process, things that are exposed down. A particular piece of property, I think, as we investigate, I know in 2019, they were told to clean up certain areas because of concerns for growth and everything. And they did comply and did clean up what they were asked to clean up. There's also a penalty in public health statutes, so that country fails to follow the directive on public health statutes as well. As it relates to city and county, we have some territorial area of the city for the attorney and general classes that fall on the county. In real property. So I'll answer that.
What did you say, Carrie?
There's an attorney general opinion from 2005 that really comes down to city health, county health, is county health and it's connected. Those are two options we looked at to consider. I mean, it comes down to what the commission wants to look at for a policy. And I think it's worth discussing inside, kind of whatever else people want to look at going in certain scenarios. It's like a toolbox of different options that we can, so option A doesn't work with someone, option B either works with someone. Exactly. Sometimes people just see the letters, sometimes people home call and, and they come to the table and they talk about issues.
Is there penalties involved then?
Well, in criminal matters, there is. A nuisance, it is, there is a maximum standard of jail, it comes down to fine and health and other implications. But if you do an abatement, you're going to clean it up, then you will levy that on the property owner. So ultimately, that's what it comes down to. The decision is a public nuisance versus a private nuisance. So I can do some research and find out what's considered public versus permanent number of people. Because if it's a determinate number of people, whether it's residential, then it's private. If it's based on all factors, not all, private. So maybe there's some things that Chris wants to think about, consider, active research that, then I'll ask you guys.
I have one question. In doing some research on it yesterday, I recall a couple of cases down in that Bismarck-Mannet area where I read about that they had done something with things of this nature. And they don't have ordinance structure, just like we don't have ordinance structure, which would allow for a fine and then, you know, escalating up to try to get things accomplished. They have it actually, a, a, I shouldn't say a, but it's a portion of their planning and zoning, where they have a, they have language in their planning and zoning that states you have to have this in your, your front yard has to be cleaned at this point, this kind of stuff, and it has different parameters, policy essentially. And then they enforce it under their planning and zoning guidelines, which still like then rolls back to a public nuisance misdemeanor B and all that kind of stuff. They have the ability to then enforce over that. Now, my question would be, since we don't have planning and zoning authority over that area, does it still roll back to the county then?
Well, according to the attorney general opinion that I have, that's in that.
But could the township change its zoning?
Township.
Well, the township zoning would, well, yes, the township zoning in this situation would matter, but it's still extraterritorial zoning though. So that's, again, down to the, is it, is it our, I mean, it's our responsibility.
In a public health practice, you know, public health, I understand.
And the parameters for?
So for example, the, or, that ordinance is, those hours are in there, people can.
What township are we in there, Bob? Creel?
Creel. That's Creel.
Has anybody talked to this gentleman?
Or as I know of, there's nobody aggressive against his claimant. And what he was asked to do in 2019, it.
Okay. Discussion, thoughts?
So you just basically have to decide if it's a public or a private?
Well, the stat too is pretty, private nuisance is a single person affected or a determinate number of people. So if three people are complaining, it's a determinate number of people. If it's an entire neighborhood or considerable, and that's what it says, neighborhood or considerable amount of people. So I can research and see what's defined as considerable. If there's any case, well, if he finds it considerable, if there's none, then it's in there.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you over the years, I've heard considerable.
So a considerable, he was like five, six, twelve, fourteen?
Twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty-five?
That helps.
Well, basically, anybody in woodland area has made a comment somewhere along, you know, about.
Well, and I guess from my perspective, I don't disagree with you, but the most important thing to me is if we're going to do anything, like you said, there's more than one property that this could affect. So we have to structure a policy that's going to be fair and equitable to everybody. So if we're going to start enforcing things, it's going to be enforced on everyone, like when enforcement action occurs. So we, we have to, I think, at least in my opinion, I like the concept of Carrie saying, we need to determine what, what the difference is between the private and the public and then, and then determine when, when do you take a health action versus a non-health action and things like that. So we, we at least have some parameters for how we're going to go forward instead of just, you know? But it's, it's, it's something that's been brought to my attention multiple times. So it's something to at least discuss and try to come up with some type of a thought process on if we're going to do anything and how we're going to move.
I agree with you, Adam. You've got to have a uniform policy. To your knowledge, Adam, do you have any idea if there's anything in our zoning and planning or health?
I went and looked last night and I saw absolutely nothing. I looked under the residential, the residential zoning ordinances and then I, or the residential zoning portion. And then I also went and looked under the enforcement guidelines, and it's pretty much nothing there. But looking at Burley's as well as Morton's, they had specific parameters for residential guidelines as well as commercial and industrial guidelines, and it had to do with parking of vehicles, things like that, non-used, non-used vehicles, things like that. Also, the option of something like, like Bob said, you know, you know, if you wanted to put stuff in your front yard, that's fine, check fence, things like that. There's different parameters in that restriction essentially. So, but, but being it's a zoning issue, how they perceive it, how they do it, I don't know if those parameters would even fall under something we could enforce. You know, being it's, we would have to attack it essentially from a public health standpoint, possibly, or, you know, depending on what we can and cannot do legally essentially.
Basically, the only thing we could do is go ask them. Oh, possibly, I'd notice.
Possibly, but it all comes out of.
It's a penalty there if they don't do something, naturally reveal, do this or promote this. So, like I said, they're also, I just want to start with a letter. Probably start with a letter and see, and there's some last name there. I don't know how much they actually leave last one, but I was told that I would have to pass it, he not won that. That was a true, true case.
I sort of think it would be helpful to go a little bit in both directions, which is to say, probably is that we have potentially draw up a policy that can address that in terms of nuisance. But I also think that we should probably take a look at whether or not we can include it in zoning and invite the townships that have zoning authority to do the same in their, in their zone. And then that way, you're hopefully preventing problems from ever occurring down the road. You know, so addressing the problems that exist now and potentially, you know, stymie future ones.
I think the nice thing about including it in zoning and what I've seen is there's a built-in appeals process and things like that too. So if, if a concern is brought and then they say, well, this isn't what it actually is, then they can work through appeals process, they can go through the planning and zoning board, and it actually has a pretty good function, it looked like to me versus just, this is what you're going to do otherwise. You know, this is what's going to happen.
So is Creel Township having a zoning and planning?
I have, no, I live in Creel Township.
Yes, I do. They have their own separate.
They're aware of this?
Yeah.
We should start with them.
I think the concern has always been is who's got the oversight? It's been the constant question because it's, since, I mean, it's specific to this one situation. It's extraterritorial, it's, is it county, is it township, is it city?
Well, I agree with you, but we should all get on the same page.
Yeah, I think that's where having this discussion was, was a positive step and trying to get us all on the same page, we can figure out whose oversight it is. But at the same point, like I said, I think the concept of drafting a whole policy, you know, doesn't have to be anything massive, but just this is how we're, what we're expecting and how we're going to enforce it, I think would be reasonable.
Is that individual operating a home-based business? Or, you know?
Define home-based business.
Well, you know, is it an ongoing business that's improperly functioning based on what their current zoning is with the township? But, you know, I think that township has addressed ongoing home businesses in the past. To me, that would just fall right in line with what they've done in the past for home-based businesses and, and commercial entities.
Okay, so what's our, what's our, what's our action plan, I guess then? Allow Carrie to do some additional research and then bring us back a memo on what we can and can't do versus, so we can figure out how we can draft a policy? Well, I mean, I just looked at the two counties. So, yeah, there might be all kinds of different ways you can enforce it.
You know, I think that that all makes sense. And then I'd say let's open a dialogue with the township and see whether or not there's any interest on there and changing their township zoning. And we could potentially take a look at our zoning as well on a countywide level. That would make sense as well.
Carrie, would it make sense to send a letter right off the bat?
I, maybe, I mean, they were, that is quick.
Might hit us off pretty quick. We need a motion to that effect?
I would say that if we want to do that.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Fifty cents might change it all up.
Were we going to take a vote on?
Yeah, yeah. We got, we have a motion in a second to have the state's attorney send a letter to the individual about cleanup and then also to come back with a toolbox of options for us to draft a policy. Further discussion. Seeing none, all fair, we vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Go to the same side. Motion, Carrie. Very good. Thank you. We got, we got done ten minutes to spare. Look at that. Okay, we're going to go back up and we actually ran past just a little bit to eight forty-five. So we will come back up to Richard and if I get your name on, excuse me, Brecker or Brecker?
Brecker.
Brecker. Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Morning. As the information that I want to forward to commissioners, I'm Richard Brecker. I'm the president of the North Coast Forest and Congress. And introduced you today to a program that the North Coast Forest and Fish have put together, the Partnership Program. And it identifies the development of water stations or aquatic stations, the water station. And it identifies the development of wash stations or aquatic nuisance, the wash station available by them. Now, my presence before you today to see if Randy County commissioners are interested in joining, I believe would be a good approach, is a tri-county approach to wash stations, working with Benson County and Nelson County on the development of these stations. In other words, basically developing a tri-county aquatic nuisance management group or management team to ensure that adequate wash stations are placed around our waters, our regional waters in Devil's Lake. Currently, Del's Lake being unique in itself represents the highest number of out-of-state registered water craft. And any given weekend, we have anywhere from forty to fifty percent of the water craft from Devil's Lake coming from out of state. It's higher than the other part of the water in North Dakota, which puts us at the greatest risk. Here in North Dakota, we have a handful, a dozen or more aquatic nuisance species that exist. But if we go across the river from Minnesota, they have identified approximately somewhere between twenty-five and thirty aquatic nuisance species that exist there. If you go further east, you get to Wisconsin, there's somewhere between thirty and thirty-five aquatic nuisance. And these are the two states that bring the most out-of-state water craft to North Dakota, Minnesota, Wisconsin, to our areas. So here today, I'm asking if Randy County would be interested in joining Benson County and Nelson County in developing a tri-county aquatic nuisance board or management team. This morning, I was on the agenda with Benson County and they agreed that they would be interested in developing or becoming part of a team that would have addressed aquatic nuisance and working with the official of the entity to develop a wash station. So that's my question today, is there interest? No commitment by you other than interest, no financial commitment, but there is an outline there by the official on that partnership program. And now I'll try to answer any questions by any of you.
There's no financial commitment?
Not today.
But in the future?
In the future, there could be.
Right here, it says sponsor will provide all needed infrastructure, sponsor will be responsible solely for operating the station and all staffing. Yeah, so there wouldn't be cost on the road presumably split with anybody else who agrees.
How many stations?
No idea, we got a large body of water.
Yeah.
Nelson County putting in one down someplace, working with their park district down there. Benson County putting something over the Minawhatan area. Randy County doing something along the highway too, so it's in a highly visible, easy access location. I know that the state official department is working with parks and recs at state level to put wash stations in our state parks. So Randy Island, they power when we have it on. And I'm also on the agenda too, or being on the agenda with everybody to see if they follow those hopes or shit and putting one on their property.
So sponsors are defined as anyone that wants to be.
Sponsors are, if you define an individual business who wanted to be a sponsor, that certainly available. That opportunity exists.
You should talk to the city of Devil's Lake, see if they want to sponsor it too.
I can certainly do that, see if they want to be part of this as well. I just don't believe that there is an individual business that is going to be able to stand by itself. Because I think this is underfunded in our area. In a smaller community, some small lake in southeast North Dakota or other area where they do not have forty to fifty percent of the water craft coming from out of state, they're probably more than the fiction people have to handle. But in this particular case, the amount of units that should be going through or should be being checked, that's a big number. But it's going to be done effectively. One thing that, you know, in North Dakota sits with about, like I said, you know, only a dozen or so aquatic nuisance species in our state. But the risk for the future of Devil's Lake is extremely high. Because the more and more aquatic nuisance that pop up, and they're going to continue to pop up, this world's not going to change. There's going to be more and more as that light goes on. But getting these stations in place and getting them done directly the first time is really set, such a first unit. So we may already have zebra mussels here. That's not stopping the next ten or twenty aquatic nuisance that's maybe coming to North Dakota.
You think they're already here?
I don't know if they are or not. The state has not been able to find any others in Devil's Lake, but there's certainly if they're in Ashtria Dula and Amore Lake, there's a risk that it could be here too.
You have experts right there.
I was going to say, we got some, we got some pretty notable fishermen sitting in the back.
And we discussed this at Lake Access and Johnny Campbell had some very good points.
So I'm Johnny Campbell, president of Lake Region Anglers, Lake Region Seaming. Thank you, Rich, for bringing this to attention to the county commission. And aquatic nuisance species is a really big problem, there's no doubt about it. My personal background, I'm from Ohio. I remember voting on Lake Erie when the zebra mussel was first discovered in the Great Lakes in the early eighties. And I watched the millions and millions and millions of dollars damage that zebra mussels did to everything before it affected sport fishing, right? Water intake, power plants, all those kind of things. We're kind of fortunate in the Midwest where we live here in Devil's Lake, that we don't have huge industry and that kind of thing with a lot of pumps and all that that zebra mussels could clog and shut down. We do have some pumping stations and all that, so there's a concern, not just in the recreational industry, but in the business industry as well, public utilities, all that. So I think we all agree that zebra mussels are the last thing we want in our lake. We don't want any new types of vegetation in our bodies of water, right? Because it upsets the ecology of the system, the ecosystem changes, fishing changes. And we can debate all day long what's most important to the community of Devil's Lake. But I think, again, everyone in this room would agree that if that lake goes away and that beautiful, wonderful tasting walleye disappears, we're all in our world here, right? There's a lot of dollars generated for our community because people want to come here and catch fish out of that lake, right? So we have to fight the fight to keep that stuff out. Wash stations are definitely a step in the right direction. And I kind of have to be careful here not to interject too many personal thoughts with my Lake Region angler hat. But I've read the one-page document that was available to me about these wash stations. Maybe it's two, I'm not sure, I think it's probably the same one everyone has. And it's just enough to do what Rich has done, but it's really not enough to make a decision on. There's so many holes in the preliminary, right? Where are they going to be, who's going to pay for it, how much is going to be involved? There's a chance that it could be hot water wash down, which needs to be manned constantly because you can't have the public coming in, spraying high-pressure hot water all over the place and burning someone's skin or taking a digit off, right? We all know what high-pressure hot water can do. And it doesn't say, are they going to be high-pressure hot water or are they not going to be high-pressure hot water? Are they going to be low-pressure, regular water? Well, heck, we already have car washes in Devil's Lake, North Dakota, that are they the same or not the same? So I love the fact that someone is thinking ahead. I think it's long overdue, but I think somebody needs to ask a lot more questions. I know Lake Region Anglers, we have our first meeting of the fall tonight and it's on our agenda to discuss this as a group. You know, are we going to jump behind a plan that kind of says, well, let's throw some wash stations out there and see what happens? I'd love to jump behind a plan that says, here's what they're going to be, here's who's going to man them. They are required to be used because right now they're not. It's, here's a big sign in the wash station and if you want to drive right by it and ignore it, you can drive right by it and ignore it. If they're manned and no one's there to man it and you come through from Wisconsin at ten o'clock at night and you want to go fish at six o'clock the next morning and yes, I was supposed to use the wash station, but there was no one there to run it for me, then does the wash station even need to be? Right? Because if you miss one guy, you might as well miss them all. So again, I love the idea, I love the concept. We need people to get behind it, but right now I think we need a lot more questions answered. I would urge the county commission to ask some of those questions because the more of us that ask those questions, the better off we are to get answers. Sometimes I have a way of rubbing Greg Powers the wrong way at the state because I don't really like the answers he gives me sometimes. And I don't always give the answer as quickly as I could. Maybe the county commission, if they show interest, could get those answers quicker. I know Rich is asking questions from the Sport Fishing Congress, but I think all of us need to ask these questions, not just check the box and say, sure, we're in. Because we don't even know what we're in for. It's maybe we're going to get one, maybe we're going to get three, where do you put them? Are they on the lake, off the lake, are they manned, if not manned? I'm not on the commission, but I don't know if I could check the commitment to look at a sheet of paper and say, sure, let's give it a try.
How many, I got a question. How many cleanings stations is there? Three? Four?
Fifteen stations.
Yeah, fifteen.
For public work.
Public seafaring.
Yeah, and then there's all hotels and whatever resorts.
Four that the, you know, the chain takes care of, is that the chain you should say?
Yeah.
This is a little more complicated than a fish cleaning station.
Well, the urgency of.
Needs more answers.
Yeah, and the urgency of use, right? I'm not a fan of putting out a wash station that says, if you feel like you have the time to do this, then please do. If we're going to put them up, and now we're getting into legislation and all that, but if we're going to have wash stations, then they shouldn't be mandatory if you come from out of state to use them before you put your boat in water. Well, now we just opened a Pandora's box that's much, much bigger than Randy County Commission, correct?
Absolutely.
And is the state willing to go that step that says, okay, we're going to put wash stations in, but if you come from out of state, you have to use them? They did issue a fifteen-dollar permit requirement to at least acknowledge the fact that you understand what aquatic nuisance species are. We did that last year with the Sport Fishing Congress. So if you come from out of state with a boat, you have to have a fifteen-dollar sticker that goes on your boat. And by purchasing that sticker, at least we know you've been made aware of the fact that you could be bringing something here that we don't want. But if there's no requirement that because I bought this sticker, I have to clean my boat, or because I bought this sticker, I have to dry my boat, or it's just I bought a sticker and I can still ignore. There is no rule saying you have to do one dang thing to protect your boat from bringing something to our water, right? There still isn't. And these wash stations, although they're a step in the right direction, they still don't come with a law or a rule that says they have to be used in order to prevent the spread of these species.
How many should there be?
Should at least have one from every direction coming to the lake, right? And they can't be on the lake, they have to be before you get to the lake. So something in Lakota would make sense from the east, right? Something in the south, fifteen miles south of the lake. Because if you let someone get to their hotel or their resort, they're not going to backtrack in the morning before they go fishing to clean their boat, right? They're going to get to their resort, they're going to make camp, they're going to get in their room and they're going to go fishing in the morning. So you got to get them before they get to the water. One of the things that's been discussed for many, many years is doing it at the border, right? Doing it at the border. We're kind of fortunate, we don't have a lot of thoroughfares that people get in and out of our state. Yeah, you can sneak around, right? We all know the little back road that crosses this border or that border, but try to drive through the state of Montana with the boat. Try to drive through Washington or Idaho or Oregon, because I traveled to all those places with the boat. I'll get stopped three times in one day to have the same boat inspected by three different states. Because every time you cross the border with a boat behind your truck, they pull you into a boat check. And if you don't stop, the red lights come on and you get pulled over three miles down the road. Don't ask me how I know. It happens. I missed the sign, I didn't see the sign, and they got me before I waited till the next exit on the interstate. So there are other ways. Again, wash stations are critical, it's a big part of it. I am urging Randy County and the City of Devil's Lake and all the townships to be involved. Our anglers club will be involved, we want this to happen. But again, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before we rubber stamp, yes, let's move forward with this. Because I don't like being involved with projects that are destined to be better because you don't have enough information. That's where I think myself and the Lake Region Anglers are going to stand on this.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it seems to me like the direction that we end up going with this, or anyone in respect to Devil's Lake and with this, will depend on how many sponsors it asks. You know, if you only have three sponsors, you might.
Bob's got a question for you, I think.
The, on the twenty-third of September, you see us, Ben Owen, not Ben Owen, ANS board here for the state and one other individual, being a Lake Access, to explain wash stations and proposals.
But we should probably wait till after that before we make any decisions.
Ben said that he would come, if the Randy County Commission and Nelson County and Benson County agreed to join forces to develop and manage the team, he would come and speak directly to that group.
Yeah, I don't see, so that's kind of moribund. I don't see anything wrong with at least initially supporting the idea of looking at what the options are. Because I don't know that we'll be able to actually accurately look at what the options are unless we know who's all going to be involved.
Well, yeah, we have to have preliminary discussions so we can ask those questions and say, you know, what's the plan here? I mean, it seems to me that game of fish should have some, at least we think, some insight into where these things should be sitting and how we should go about doing this. Plus, locally, you should be able to say, that's not going to work or it's going to work. When we've got people that know the lake better than anybody around, so.
And I would be more than willing to donate some time, you know, meeting here, home or there, whenever anybody needs to help, both as a person and as the Lake Region Anglers president falls under what I do. Obviously, I'm passionate about the lake, but whoever helps me knows I'm passionate about the lake. And I don't want to see it destroyed by something that could be strong, so it's very important to all of us.
Like you said, a rough outline doesn't constitute a plan yet. So we sit down and actually have the discussions about how it's going to function, who's going to be involved in all of those things, you know, commitment wise and everything. But I don't think there's anything wrong, from at least my perspective, starting to have those discussions.
Yeah, do we need that motion and how should we work that? I don't want to put us on a hook for whatever may come out of it, but at least to say that I made the motion that Randy County will, we will explore. Yeah, explore the options that's available and contingent, on a contingent basis, support the idea of creating a wash station about this tri-county management team. Looking with Nelson County and Benson County? Well, like any, any plan that would work for the lake would need to evolve that. Only one of the counties is doing something, the other two are not, they've not accomplished a whole lot. So I suppose that, yes, I would include that in the motion, but we look into that as well.
Is there kind of what Benson County did this morning, Rich?
You got that written down again?
Financial, you know, obligations. Want to share more?
Okay.
An entry, more, join forces.
So we're making a motion that we are willing to participate to look at our options essentially.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, further discussion?
I've been on that A and S committee for ten years down with the state and gone through a couple different A and S coordinators. And this is a step in the right direction. You know, we talked a lot about tools in our toolbox here at the commission. And a wash station would certainly be another tool in that toolbox of A and S prevention. We get criticized a lot about our water quality downstream. But one of the things that we don't have in Devil's Lake is aquatic nuisance. We may have some additional salts and things that people may not like, but we don't have zebra mussels. We don't have a lot of the other things that are, we want to keep away and keep out. And so this will go a long ways in helping that when we need some. Like Johnny said, a lot of answers, a lot of questions answered. And, but I think this is an initial step in the right direction is joining forces with Nelson and Benson County exploring these options. with Nelson and Benson County exploring those options. And probably including the Spirit Lake Nation on that. Because there's access points and public access points within their boundaries as well. It's gonna take a team effort to keep A N S out of our area, out of our region. And we worked really hard several years back on keeping carp out on our current barriers. And I think this is no exception. I think zebus are you do that research on them and they're a scary nasty little critter that once they get in, you cannot get rid of them. They're here forever. And they populate like crazy.
Further discussion on the motion. Seeing done, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're jumping around so we can figure where I'm at here.
I think we're up to Kevin.
All right.
Can I ask one question real quick? Crystal, do you have copies of the changes that, for the COVID-19 policy? Can you make some copies of it just so we have it for everybody, because I don't know if everybody's seen it yet? Thank you. I just figured I'd ask you before we got to that portion. Okay, Kevin, you're up.
All right. I don't know if everyone's got a copy of my second agenda.
All right, great.
First of all, project updates posted, getting the gravel done on Benson County lines. So that's done now. And I've pretty little finished up all of our larger projects for the summer. Any questions on that? Okay, then we got the bill for the gravel on Ramsey nine B that Silver's did and had invoice was for forty-three thousand, six hundred and five dollars. And I'd like a motion to pay that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to pay the bill with Silver's. Further discussion? Seeing done, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Riff?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
I think we went to the bathroom.
Um, Mike?
Aye. Motion carries.
Did we, didn't we approve that before? Or was it just the approval for the real good? This is very difficult. Same thing with close construction, they submitted their invoice from that county line. Keep in mind, we didn't do that one mile, that first mile off the U S two because the bridge is underwater. So that's a little bit less than what the original bid was for, but their invoice was twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And I'd like a motion to pay that off. Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to the second to pay the bill for close construction for the gravel graveling. Further discussion? Seeing done, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Riff?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye. Motion carries.
Hey, everyone, I asked Silver to do some spot gravel on nine A or their two nine B, and they did have time at the time, but they did agree to do it for the same price. So that's gonna take about twelve or fifteen loads and figure out the high side, those loads of cost, approximately three dollars, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's for spot gravel, the soft spots that showed up, they're pretty much healed up now, they're just kind of depressions and black spots. This will be to get some gravel on top of that. Move to approve.
Second.
Keep going there.
We have a motion to the second to have Silver do some spot gravel on nine A. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries.
Then also I need to order a blue culvert for stock. They'll be just over thirty, around thirty thousand. And I guess all of these culverts should last fifty next spring. We won't have to order them for a while. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to the second to buy culverts for stock. Further discussion? Seeing done, all in favor, vote by, oh, excuse me. Are we paying for them or are we ordering them? Ordering them?
Ordering them.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Sorry about that. Same order, paying for them.
Hey, same thing with cutting, because I just need to order them for now. It's for the motor graders for rest of the summer and also for the winter maintenance. They're gonna cost twelve thousand and ninety dollars. Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion to the second by cutting just for the graders. Further discussion? Seeing done, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries.
Hey, North Dakota Telephone Company is asking for permission to vary a fiber optic cable on Ramsey County water on the north side of the bike path. We've got a limit down there. Down there? Yes. Sorry, I'm having a little problem. And I guess I looked at it, I don't see a problem, because it's about seven hundred and fifty feet. It'll stay within our right of way. And it will be kind of trenched in, a microtrench. Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to the second to allow I D T C to raise the fiber cable on the right of way on County One. Further discussion? Do they don't bore them anymore?
Uh, they do, they have to, they'll go under one approach, they'll bore that, but if they're not disturbing an approach or a road or something like that, then they can try and find other ways to do it.
Well, it says they're gonna bore underneath the, yeah, Constance driveway here, so.
Yeah. Well, bore the driveway that they're gonna open, cut, they're actually, it's easier. It's easier to bore the whole one?
Pretty exciting.
Okay, further discussion? We didn't vote yet, all right. Seeing done, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries.
Hey, then get back to the low pass. I think we're about as ready as we're gonna get. We didn't get all the townships to sign off on it, but in a case like that, they don't route vehicles through the townships that haven't signed off yet, so it's just a matter of they'll have to route traffic around the townships that haven't agreed to it. Oh, I think we're ready to sign up for it. I had Carrie look at this agreement, and she said she didn't see any problems with it. If you wanna get out of it, it's a sixty day process, so still possible to be out of it in the future if we decide to do that. Just to say Carrie didn't have any issues with signing the agreement.
How many townships refused to sign up?
We got over half that signed up.
Most of them down in the county?
Yeah, all of them down south here on our side.
I'll move to approve. Second. Okay, we have a motion to the second seeing we saw the low pass agreement. Further discussion? The only question I have, Kevin, is when they collect the fees, I've heard in other counties that the counties have retained more of the fees and the townships don't get as much back on there. What's the slip or cover or how this, because it doesn't really say anything here? That's set locally for us, right? We get to set anything?
Yeah, I know you would just give it all back. We don't have that here.
Okay, so when a township road is used, they get that portion with the county road used, and you get our, fair enough.
Some of these counties have taken part.
Other counties have been, there's been some counties that have signed up for it, and they basically retain like eighty-five percent of it. So it doesn't matter if township road is used, the county retains the left.
Really?
I've seen that.
There's probably a minimal amount of penetration?
Yeah. They keep a little, yeah, but some of the counties are receiving more costs than what they're told. I don't know if there's too much of that or not, but I think so. I just wanted to know how we should start with low back with the townships. Okay, so we have a motion to the second to sign on the low pass agreement. Further discussion? Seeing done, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries.
Hey, the last thing I have is just to let you guys know that we take the votes on that guardrail for that more township bridge. I think we're ready to get it installed now. Good answer for her to the state. I think it's wide enough for the coast. So we're ready to take the votes now, just so, that's the next meeting, I'll probably have those results. It's not gonna be high, we have to have a paper, so it's all two or three minutes.
I guess.
Wouldn't have to yet, so I get the votes.
Okay. Before we go motion then. Okay, anything else? I have one question to ask. I've had several calls, and we've talked about it before, in Ramsey County four where they made the cuts, and then they replayed, repaired it. My question is, do they, okay, so if there's a concern in terms of a change, it has to go through the water board, but previously there weren't those additional culverts in there. So are we going to allow them to keep the culverts in after they, after they made the cut, put a culvert in? Or are we going to ask them to take the culvert back?
So to, we kind of turned that over to the water board. And I think they took, I don't, I didn't get into that meeting, but I think they took the stance that unless there's a complaint, we're gonna complain, they're not gonna take action.
Really? So the water board did, right?
Well, I think it was and we had sat through a, one of our summer conferences for the water meetings, had an attorney where it's not the water board's authority, but it's the highway departments. It's the road departments and responsibility, so it falls back upon us as a county.
Well, I've just, I've had the question, you know, obviously that's up in my neck of the woods, so I've had a few neighbors call and they said, you know, if we don't essentially do something and tell them, you can't just decide we're gonna put additional culverts in someplace, then what's gonna stop the next guy from going on? And I understand the rationale behind that argument, because essentially at this point in time, if the water board won't do anything about it, and we won't do anything about it, then essentially somebody just got to do additional drainage without
Right.
having to ask anyone.
Well, I assumed you were still, it was still an issue. You know, that the water board hasn't returned any motive action to this or what we're supposed to consider. Well, I was waiting for the water board. I didn't think of the dead issue at all.
I didn't think it was necessarily a dead issue, but I just wanted to bring it up to see where we were at more than anything, because I've had the question multiple times.
I don't know, did you get it on that board, maybe?
Uh, bits and pieces of it.
Who is the chairman again?
Brian Wolf.
I gave Brian all the background, but that's a good layer for the name.
But I'm pretty sure that during our, in that webinar that we had or did in the summer conferences, that it fell back upon the county highway.
That's why we, yeah.
You know, so if we, and this is what I think should happen, is that we should ask the landowner to remove those culverts. Or we will do it for them and build them back for them.
Well, I wanna make sure we have jurisdiction to do whatever we're gonna do, but I just wanted, I just wanted to know where we were at, more of a question than anything, to see.
Jeff, I would answer that question. I wouldn't let the landowner back in there. We didn't want him in there first. Well, and we don't want him back in there. Yeah.
Okay.
So they were in the wrong stepping in there first.
Right.
But we don't want that now. If we're gonna do something, we're gonna have Kevin in charge and put it back to what we want.
Well, do we actually, I mean, apart from billing them for the cost, I mean, shouldn't, is that fine enough? You know, or should be, is there some ability to levy a fine? Because you really don't want private citizens to feel empowered to go and do whatever they want with county property wherever they want to.
At least without permission.
Literally.
Yeah. Well, that's the thing. I mean, it's, it's, it's tough to put your head around that, but I mean, if it's in the county right of way, it's no different than the county courthouse or the county shop. I mean, it's county property. I mean, and they went on and just decided they were gonna do something and and it's, like I said, I wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way. But I just wanted to know where we were at, if we were back, you know, because I have, like I said, I've gotten multiple calls saying, well, what are you going to do about this? Essentially. And I didn't have a good answer yet because I hadn't heard.
I talked with Gary, she said it would be something that along the lines of destruction of public property or along those lines, it would have to be turned over to the sheriff's department for an investigation. And based upon what their findings from that investigation would come up with, charges appropriate to it. And then there's, you know, different levels of, of criminal activity or, you know, fines and, or criminal, you know, ten thousand dollar fine, class B, misdemeanor, whatever, type of situation they would determine, but and then I would certainly encourage the private residents who are affected by that to bring up a civil lawsuit to reclaim the damages from the flood of crops that would cause by that action.
Well, yes, on a level, it would be no different, you already kind of mentioned this, it would be no different than some private citizen coming and cutting a hole in the wall of the county commission from upstairs so that they had easier parking access, right? It's not really any different.
It's, county right of way is county property, and we retain that for a reason. I mean, it's not, it's supposed to be left the way it is for a reason. I just wanna, so, I mean, we don't have to take any action, I just wanted to bring it up so we can get some clarity on how we're supposed to move forward, so we can address it probably in our next meeting, whatever it's gonna be. But just so it's not forgotten, we have some options on what we're gonna do, or to get some clarity on.
We're gonna do something, yeah, you're right, Kevin. We're gonna do something, we gotta, but Kevin, get on.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, we're already the first meeting of September, so. Wait, if we're gonna do anything about it, like take them, you know, make a move to take them back, whatever that's going to be, then have to give you some time to actually try that off.
One thing, Kevin, what do you think, if you looked at it, you could come up with some type of plan to put it back to what it was? It would cost a whole lot of cost.
We could just, there's one on our actual township road that, you know, we got, we turned the whole place out. The other three are on timber roofs.
The township road one, the township hasn't said now, maybe. Or is it up on the right of way, is it on the right of way?
It is on our right of way.
Okay. It's not worth it, yeah. But I hope we can just come to some type of agreement and put it back to what it was.
I think we have the equipment, we can do it ourselves. But reduce some costs.
Maybe that's something we should do now, I mean, like Kevin said, here we are in September. We had a snowstorm in October, Kevin's hands are pretty busy.
Yeah, we had a snowstorm.
Yeah, wow.
So we talked about that.
I would make a motion to have Kevin put it back to the way it was, and you know.
Let's have a look at it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, but if we need to go to a penalty like a sheriff's department, we probably don't want to change the evidence. Well, I think everybody knows evidence. But, I mean, would it make sense to start by approaching the landowner and getting them to agree to pay the cost of taking out the culverts and bringing everything back to normal? And I don't know if we find them on top of that or not. If they won't agree, then at that point, you pursue potentially the sheriff's department act. Would that be, would that be fair to them?
Should we offer them the chance to do it themselves? I mean, just a thought.
But we talked earlier, we want to back in the fish.
Right. Unless we oversee their.
No, I think it's a deal where it's our right of way, they should have been in it in the first place. We should do it. We should close it back up and they should get charged. In terms of the cost of what it's gonna cost, test the repair and put it back to the way it was.
Kevin, you believe you can fit it into your work schedule?
This month, October.
This month?
This month. October, we're gonna start all chips, and we'll be busy for three weeks.
Well, let's.
Let's kind of lose. I'm sorry. Get back to where it was.
I could wait until the next meeting and still get it. I could.
I just wanna make sure we have clarity to make sure we're making, where we have the authority to make the decision. I would assume we do it at our right of way, but, you know, I don't wanna step on it. It's a water board, you know, until we have clarity from now on.
Okay, we'll probably get that clarity before the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if we can get some clarity, we still have time at the next meeting to make a decision or allow you guys to get the work done.
So we don't go crazy in that instance.
That's okay with everybody?
Sorry, did we not have clarity from the water board? Did they not?
Well, I, I guess.
Did they punch it back to the right of way?
Well, that's.
We don't really have that. I just want to make sure.
That's the assumption, I guess. We haven't had anything written from them or documentation, I guess. Has anybody seen any specific documentation stating what they're doing or what they aren't doing? I haven't.
No, I just, okay. I think there's been a lack of communication and you need to know who's gonna be conveying that information to who, kind of thing. You know, I think last time around it wasn't properly conveyed and I don't know if they fully knew about it or, I don't know if it was, yeah. Because I don't know if it was on their agenda for their last meeting and, um, probably should have been, um, before their discussion.
Well, and I apologize if I spread this on this meeting, but I just saw culverts up there and then it made me think of it, that it got calls on its own.
Do you want to make a directive to the water board to get this, when, when do they meet again?
They meet Monday the 14th, I think.
The day before we meet.
Right.
I would say, yeah, let's, let's make sure that they have the discussion. If they haven't, give us some clarity on what their position is. And then we could have Carrie also look into is it theirs or is it our decision to make? And then we can, that second meeting is September, then we'll have to drop that on what we're gonna do and what we're not.
Do you want that into a motion or not?
It's up to me. We can, I guess. Doesn't matter. I mean, it's, it's.
I didn't, I didn't make a motion.
No, I, you were thinking, I thought you were thinking wrong.
Mark was thinking wrong.
Yeah, I was. Well, I'll, I'll make, I'll change it. I'll make my, my motion to direct the water board to come up with a decision at their next meeting so that we can discuss what we're going to do at our next.
I like that much. Second, we have a second, further discussion. And concurrently, I'll bring it up with Carrie just so she can make sure that we got some clarity. Okay, all in favor of both by saying aye?
Aye.
Both say aye. All right, very good. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll get back to my other sheet here. Okay, up to open the 19th discussion. Thank you, Chris, we appreciate it. I can basically leave this, uh, leave the discussion up. Uh, the, let me open my mic here again. Because we, we had a couple of changes that arose from, um, the survey as well as discussion that occurred at the department head meeting last week. We needed some clarity on a couple of different things. Let me, I gotta pull up the, that here. Just as they kept little, the, okay, so essentially, uh, yeah, the use of mask recovery as a customer, we already made that change. Uh, so there was essentially two different questions. The question of, we've had a directive in the past that, uh, when you were outside of your workspace as a employee, uh, you should be wearing a mask. And the question then was asked, uh, how about meeting usage? So if everybody comes together for a meeting, so does that technically count as their workspace or does that technically count as out of their workspace? Uh, and that question was brought up at the last department head meeting. Uh, Crystal directed it to Public Health and I asked Public Health to be here today, but I never got a response. Um, but she asked Public Health for clarity on it and Al said that, uh, we should be requiring, uh, under the directive from the, uh, Department of Health, that whenever they're outside their workspace in any capacity, they should be wearing a mask at all times. So even if they go to a, a meeting or something like that and there's multiple people in the room, then they should be wearing a mask at all times. Uh, and that's the Department of Health's, uh, opinion. That doesn't mean we have to necessarily adopt it, but that is what their opinion was. So that change has been made to the operating plant. Um, and then the other one was the question of, and this came up from the survey, um, uh, accommodating employees with children when it comes to, uh, now that we have schools starting back up. I'm probably the only one that has a kid in school anymore. So I'm probably the most, uh, I've looked at probably this the closest, the closest of all of you, but so there's, and I can probably have Crystal explain it, but there's the families first, something I can't remember. FFRCA and then there's FMLA and then there's different guidelines under the FFRCA for how things are handled when it comes to leave. And we're required to give our staff certain leave when it comes to education of children. In concurrence with allowing them the ability to do things like telecommute and things like that. So we, we just, essentially the, the overarching message is we're gonna have to be flexible with our employees because the law through the end of the year is we have to be flexible for them when it comes to, uh, teaching kids from home. Uh, and, and the reason we have to be flexible is, and I, I double checked the plan for it, and I don't know the public school plan, I haven't read theirs completely, but I've read St. Joe's. And the minute we have one positive in the school, whether it's a student or a staff, we are closed off for 72 hours. The second one that happens after that first one, so if there's one positive and we have a positive within the next two weeks following that of one of our students or staff, we are closed for two weeks. And we go to distance learning automatically. So the concern with any of that is, I would assume the public school has something similar in place. At the drop of a hat, we could have employees that all of a sudden are saying, my kid's gonna be, you learn a whole lot more than I'm gonna do. You know, and we have single parent households, we have two parent households, so we have to be essentially flexible. So that's essentially what this change is saying, um, is that we are, uh, you know, recognizing that there's the, the act is in place. We are going to follow the law as it states. There are excluded employees which are emergency responders like sheriff's deputies, child welfare workers, service providers and the emergency manager. So they are excluded because they are considered essential workers. Uh, now that doesn't mean that we can't make accommodations from a department head if they have the ability to do so, but we don't, we aren't required to do so. Where the accommodations have to be made for all other employees.
Quick sidebar, which isn't very important. Um, your last sub bullet point there, second sentence, uh, you might want to strike the word under at the end of the sentence because it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so the last sub bullet point on the first page, second sentence, which ends with unless an employee elects to use existing county vacation or sick leave under a period.
Oh.
I guess I don't know where you're at. We're processing error. Uh, essentially, so, yeah, uh, the, the only question I would have, or not question, but I was kind of rambling here, I realize, but. Um, so then the other component of this is talking about children in the workplace because if something happens at the drop of a hat, what are we going to allow our employees to do? Uh, Crystal reached out to our insurance. We got guidance that, uh, and, and from Public Health as well, stating that we obviously don't want more people in the building than we need in the building. But if it's a short term, you know, all, school had to close at noon, I have nobody to watch my kid for a couple of hours. They could come into the building as long as they stay in that parent's workspace, but they have to be older than nine years old because our insurance said anything younger than that and we have liability insurance. So that's how the plan is written as is right now. Uh, the other thing that I would make note of is on that FFRCA, when we are required to give that parent leave to go, uh, uh, home to teach a child. If we can't make the accommodation, then we still pay them, but they are at two thirds rate of paying. Once they get past their initial two weeks, if they want to use the COVID portion of it previous to the FFRCA. So the question is, do we want to, we, we can be more, uh, lenient than that, I guess it's probably not. We can say we'll keep people on full pay or we can do the two thirds like the FFRCA. It's just we will only be reimbursed from CARES Act dollars to that two thirds rate. Because this is all reimbursable from the federal government because it's a, it's a mandate that they're requiring of us uh, through the 31st of December this year. So I'm sorry if I couldn't have very clear idea on that, but it's kind of convoluted because there's multiple tracks of what's going on here from federal government, from FMLA, from all kinds of different things going on. So it's an addendum to the policy as stated, uh, to cover so that our employees have some clarity about how it's gonna be handled if that does happen. And honestly, I don't know how many kids we have, uh, how many of our employees have kids at school age. I'm sure there's a decent amount though. We have a lot of employees. And, uh, Ron's staff would be treated slightly differently, obviously, because of the state guidelines versus, versus the county guidelines comparatively, but they would be similar. You have FFRCA guidelines and all that too.
We have about 25 that are under, most are under nine unfortunately, so I, that was news.
Yeah, and, and we had, and we discussed that back and forth. It's just a question of, you know, I understand that the concern too, because at the drop of a hat, if you got a kid and what are you gonna do with them type of thing? But that was the guidance from the insurance company is that we shouldn't know, you know, just because once you're younger than nine, I mean, I have a five year old, she's kind of, I, I wouldn't want her to walk around. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, so they did miss the third time we didn't mention that.
Yeah. That, that would be okay. And, and we still have it written, as long as I'm reading it correctly, that it still is up to the session of the department head. If it's a 15 or 20 minute window or something where you're just trying to make up, okay, I had to pick the kid up, I'm making a plan, trying to find grandparents, whatever. You can sit with your kid at work to make that accommodation. But we just, like I said, I think the most important thing in hearing back from the department head meeting, from multiple different department heads, is that we just, we need to be flexible because who the heck knows what's gonna happen? It's kind of what it comes down to. I mean, from a flexibility standpoint, I don't know what we're gonna do if something happens because the kids are gonna be right in the town by now.
I make a motion without being, remember?
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Motion for a second. Great, we have a second. Further discussion and questions. I mean, there's a lot of stuff here, so I want to make sure everybody has a chance to ask any questions that they, uh, that they have. And, and for open and honest, for clarity, there was a split at the department head meeting on how we should handle kids in the workplace if at all. Some thought that it shouldn't be something that should be allowed, some thought it would be okay. This is kind of a middle ground in saying, if it's a short term thing, we'll deal with it, but it's not a long term solution. And we're going to give you flexible working options and you can get home with your kid then and teach him at home if you have. But if it's a afternoon or something, we have to accommodate, able to accommodate if that's what you want.
Child care is a real problem.
Yeah.
A real problem.
Well, you know, especially in a situation now where you have some grandparents that are trying to distance and stuff like that, well, that's usually the fallback. All grandparent.
I just told Lucas, then we have grandparents changing their phone numbers. Sounds about right.
I don't, that's, I'm not one.
I don't know, but in all honesty, having kids, it's an eye opening experience because I don't know what we do with our grandparents and the community around us who are helping kids. It's just, uh, we always, you know, we never know what's gonna come up. It's great having, I'm lucky, I've got two sets of grandparents.
It's very hard, it's really long. So you're saying it's true that old son takes a village trace job?
It does. It does take a village trace job.
When we have our staff, we forgot that. It's part, I was, or, or part of the case, it was, I believe, it's that actually.
Yeah, you know, and it's, it's, it's tough too, if you, if you're not used to having kids or all that stuff. And I understand the wanting to make sure that the workplace still functions, but there is, you know, flexibility is the name of the game right now. This is basically what comes up. So we have a motion and a second. We'll discuss. You're okay with the two thirds for now?
So this just goes through the first of the year there?
The FFRCA does, yes. That, that'll hold true until then. We'll see if they do an extension or how they're gonna handle it after January 1st. Uh, at that point, we'll have to probably change policy depending upon where we're at. It's kind of the nature of this whole thing. We're just, we've had to make changes as we've gone along because guidance has changed and things have changed and we honestly don't know what's happening. But yeah, this is, this will be good through December 11th. And we'll see what, what Congress does or does not.
Assuming you can be flexible and accommodating for parents is the key.
Yeah.
Because nobody knows what's gonna happen.
Well, and the most important thing to me is, I guess I look at it from this perspective, where we have good employees, we have, we got them here. We need to be flexible if we need to keep them, you know? You know, as long as the work is being accomplished, let's be flexible and work with them because it, it costs a lot of money to train a new employee or have turnover because they had to quit their job because you weren't trying to help make it work for them. Okay, uh, further discussion. None at all, in favor of both by saying aye?
Aye.
Both say aye. Carrie's, very good, thank you. Okay, uh, approval of the chair to sign the memorandum of agreement between Ramsey County and Dakota Prairie Community Action. And I can have, I can have Ron to kind of fill, I can fill in too.
Um, this is an agreement with Perry London. Um, this has been a long process. I'm getting to know the world of Justin Messner and Russ Krasinski, so. Um, this is FEMA funds. Um, we had to get, uh, Mr. Perry London graciously agreed to be our fiscal agent and apply for the FEMA grant. Um, the FEMA funds will come to Ramsey County. He's done a lot of work for our county to get those grants for the non-congregate housing for COVID positive people that need to quarantine or are homeless. So we appreciate his work. Part of that work is we needed a memorandum so that when we get the funds, we can pay, uh, Dakota Prairie back. It costs about $1,400 for 10 days or 14 days, depending, give or take some odd dollars for, um, our non-congregate housing. We have housed, um, since, the, the, to give you a little history, the program was started by the, the Department of Human Services person, Sarah. She has a background in, um, homeless housing projects. And so she started it with the idea that it would be handed off to the counties. That didn't go so swimmingly well, but, um, we did manage to come together and figure out a way to pay for it. Um, it, 75% of it is FEMA dollars, 10% is reimbursed by the state of Dakota and 15% are CARES Act dollars through our health department. And so we'd have a memorandum with Ramsey, Towner and Benson. Those are the three counties I'm involved with. Ramsey, Towner, Benson and Rolette because of my job as the, um, local director for our agency. I know the state person is working directly with Cavalier Emergency Manager and Cavalier County Emergency Manager and Eddie County Emergency Manager to give this memorandum signed with their commission. So, um, we have, unfortunately, um, there are at any given time 15 to 20 people in our non-congregate housing because if you live with someone and you're COVID positive or you, or you need to quarantine, you know, they say, sorry, you can't stay here, you need to leave. So, um, I think that so far since the state quit administering the program, so to speak, we've had about four people, so five. So as of July 19th or 20th, we've housed five people under this from Ramsey County. So.
We've been running, running it for what, about, would you say July 15?
July 19th, 13th.
So it's, we've had five people. I mean, that's, it's been utilized.
Tanya, um, Tanya Denock from our agency does the intake. There are very strict rules. A lot of times people don't leave it and they just say, okay, no thanks. Because you can't leave your room. We have, um, uh, the, the, um, Larry Leonard from Rolette County, the senior meals coordinator, uh, has been very, very helpful. So our senior meals is very helpful also. They'll deliver the food. There's a fridge in a microwave in the units that we use and a roll file that we use. So they deliver Saturday and Sunday and Friday. Um, so we've, we've, uh, Spirit Lake Nation has, I believe they have 15 rooms being used right now. So it's very busy. Um, with our numbers ticking up, I expect that, you know, it'll continue. We haven't had a tiny thing with this, but. So that's the time where we're at. We hope to have a, um, an agreement tomorrow, I believe, or maybe Thursday, we have a meeting with Justin Messner and Russ Krasinski. Russ Krasinski, I don't know if I'm saying his name right, with Turtle Mountain, to see if we can do some work, because of course, for morale to drive to the shelter, the non-congregate shelter in Devils Lake, which is a motel, is very difficult, if someone's COVID-positive or had close exposure, no one really wants to do more than that. So, we're going to work with tribal partners there, to see if we can lawyer in on their contract, or their rooms that they're using. So, that's kind of where we're at. Thanks.
We have a motion and a second to sign the documents with the MOA, with, with a break, actually, further discussion. All I'll say is a thank you to Rhonda, and, and everybody that's been able to get it together, because the state kind of just, I think they thought that we weren't going to need it anymore, and all of a sudden it started to be needed again, and we had to get something, we had to get something together real quick, and it's functioning, so.
Yeah, there was a communication error between Public Health and Emergency Managers, too, that was unfortunate. I don't know how that all shut down, but, very much, a needed service. Like I said, four or five people isn't a lot, but if you're that, one of those four or five people, it is a lot, and it also creates a public health issue if you don't have somebody.
I should thank Perry.
I will, he's been very, very good to work with. He, he thought he could apply on his own, he ended up using, of course, using our FEMA number, if I could have, I gotta email, I'll email you a copy, I gotta send that to him as quick as I can. So he ended up using at least our FEMA dollars, which I wasn't totally aware of how that worked either, so apparently at the beginning of the pandemic, our emergency manager applied for FEMA dollars, or is it just a given, I don't know what that process is, but we used our FEMA number, so. I, Dakota Curry will pay, and we will reimburse, as far as getting the money, so.
Yeah. Yeah, further discussion. None at all, if you're in favor, both by saying aye?
Aye.
What's up, Carrie? Well, Carrie's, I guess I signed it before we, all right. Okay.
You're up to, this is a delegation. Okay, portfolios, Commissioner Pitt.
Not a whole lot, we heard a good presentation from Sarah today on what's going on in the county agents' office, state's attorneys. Carrier remains busy with different things, their staff is still half-time, courts are being done by telephonic type of situations, they're going to reevaluate staff back in the office, full staff anyway. Reevaluate that on an ongoing basis. Airport authority, $1.4 million in CARES Acts, sounds like a for-sure deal over the next four years, so O and M money, that would be coming into the Devils Lake Airport, that initial report of $16 million. We're still looking at what portion of that would or could come to Devils Lake Airport. We certainly, certainly a lot of wishes and wants and needs out of the airport, you know, money certainly could be spent, but, you know, it's not going to be there, or you're not going to spend it, kind of thing. And Chamber, a lot of things have been put on hold with some of their activities, Wine Walk was canceled. That was their big September event for the Chamber, but a lot of people feeling uncomfortable with having that many people walking walking downtown and visiting their establishments, coming in, it's a very well-attended event. They did have their Chamber golf outing on Friday, which was well-attended, and good participation in that, so COVID's kind of thrown a monkey wrench in a bit of everything.
Okay, Mr. Wolf.
Everything's pretty quiet, we heard from Lake Access. LEC is running very well, high counts, yesterday we were at 96. It's, it's doing well, and that, the whole world is pretty quiet.
Not bad, they.
Miss your brow.
Social services met last week, heard about that, went to jail, all right. Maybe they had a party on her, yesterday, 25 years ago. Did today?
It's checking days.
Good, thanks.
It's already September, you can't believe it, it's already September.
Congratulations there. Commissioner Whitfield.
Hold spot on the western front.
Thank you.
Be quiet. All I'll say is, you guys heard from pretty much everything I've been to. I've got a forum at Devils Lake tomorrow, Social Services last week, we heard plenty of, and County Housing 30. Maybe that's been pretty wild, I was trying to get, trying to get hurt, looking for the Chris Ross, you know? Already September, it's hard to believe.
Okay, anything else to go to the order? announcements. Ain't nothing, we're good.